Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, the PowerPoint I'm going to do here, I gave everyone a copy of it so you can take it with you. We've got a lot of projects going on. It's a lot of dates and updates to keep track of, so you can keep that as a reference if you get any phone calls or anything. So, our big Evergreen, ninety percent mile project here from Northwestern up to I-696 is progressing along a little bit ahead of schedule. The biggest development has been Civic Center being closed right here at Evergreen. That went into effect late on Friday. That will be closed for about a month. So, the detour, Central Park Boulevard will take you back around to Evergreen and Eleven Mile here to get back to the corridor. The mainline paving started last week and down at where they had finished the ten-mile intersection, and that's progressed up to Civic Center. They've gapped out that Civic Center area. That closure is so that we can get some water mains installed, some of the new water mains that we're building, make our connection on Civic Center, and some of the stormwater infrastructure there. And then you'll see them, you know, breaking up all the pavement and move forward after the utility work with the paving of that intersection, and then continue with the rest of the west side of the street. That sixty-inch storm sewer through Traveler's Tower property, still under construction, that's supposed to be completed by the end of this week. Things are always changing schedule-wise, it seems, you know, depending on weather and how far they get with construction. So, originally, we were doing a weekend closure for that sixty-inch storm crossing, and then they thought that we would be getting into phase four of paving, which is the east side of the road, so that they wouldn't have to close the road, they'd be able to do half at a time. Now, they say, even though we're ahead of schedule, we're about a month ahead of schedule, but in order for us to start on the west side of the road, we were gonna start at the north end and start coming south. It's really just to get through that first roundabout would be about two months' worth of work, and we're only one month ahead of road construction schedule. So, it looks like there's not gonna be any actual paving work on the east side of the road this year, which was for the original plan, we just thought we'd be a little ahead of the game by this point. But because we aren't doing that, um, work on the east side of the road at all, that means we will have a weekend closure for that sixty-inch storm sewer crossing. And that'll be sometime between the middle of October and middle of November. And so far, I mean, on budget in general, it's been a pretty smooth project. We haven't run into a lot of issues that couldn't be resolved rather quickly. Sometimes the underground, especially on a big corridor like the Southfield, has a lot of fiber optics and private utility companies in our rights-of-way, so those are usually our biggest challenges. Just minor issues on this job that we've been able to schedule around between the contractor and the private utility companies and move forward. Our South Evergreen job has a little bit more to talk about. They're about fifty percent complete with construction as far as price of the amount of work going on. Um, doesn't look like a whole lot's been done because the paving hasn't started yet, but the water main is ninety percent complete, the storm sewer's ninety percent complete for the whole job, and then the week of the fifteenth, they're going to be starting a little bit of paving down by Eight Mile. We're gonna have about three weeks' worth of work, where this one lane of southbound traffic is going to have to be detoured through a neighborhood. So, that neighborhood on the west side of Evergreen, just north of Eight Mile, that West Hampton, West Dover, West Land, that gets some of the weather mixed up. But those first three streets, they're only access to the Evergreen Road, and because of the DTE gas work that is slowing us down right close to Eight Mile, um, we're trying to get a temporary lane of pavement in, detour people through there, so that then we can move forward with some mainline paving. So, the DTE gas has been the biggest challenge on this job. It's been months, pretty much ever since the project started, we've been coordinating with them, and they're saying they know what they wanna do, they just haven't been getting out there to get it done in time. So, the last, a week ago, the biggest problem was right down by Eight Mile. Now, they seem like they finally got a crew in there, and they're gonna be done, and, you know, with our minor modification, we're gonna be okay in getting all that done. Now, it's like the whole north half of the job, they've got, they're doing all these spot repairs, so we're back and forth talking to them every other day, trying to get something set in stone. If they don't get their crews working on the north half at a faster pace, we're not gonna get it all paved this year. So, if we don't get it paved this year, we're trying to express to them, that's probably coming with a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar price tag from the contractors, that we're gonna be looking to DTE gas to reimburse. So, we're hoping when they understand the serious implications of their progress, that they'll bring more horses and get this work done before there's more conflict. So, right now, assuming DTE gas gets done, what they need to get done, we're still looking at a November fifteenth, November fifteenth completion for that, for the road to be open, all the paving to be done. We would just finish up with the restoration come spring. So, our Eleven Mile job has started more recently. This is Eleven Mile over by Inster, that was first twenty-three hundred feet. So, all the curving gutters have been removed, and right now, they've got edge drains going in and a little bit of storm sewer work to facilitate the raised curb elevation. We did get a quote for the median island for that area. It did come in higher than we were expecting. We're still working on the contractor with that. They had a couple of prices for the planting mix that goes back in. We're probably gonna pull out of that road contract and have one of our landscape companies bring that in, because for some reason, they were really high on that item, but it's still within our contingency money, so we think we're still good and planning on moving forward with those median islands. This one is, so far, still on schedule for a mid-to-late October completion to have that open. We will be going into the second phase of construction on September fifteenth, which is really the last month of construction where that corridor is closed through traffic. There, the local businesses and residences will have access, but they'll be driving through construction aggregates to get to their driveways. The Road Commission's Greenfield Project, this is southbound between Eight and Nine Mile. Our water main, being the only real underground part of the project, was done first, so that is all installed and complete and operational. Our COC continues with the mainline concrete paving they just started on recently, and they said they'll be done with the mainline by the end of this week. Then they'll come back and do the concrete and the pavement turnaround, and then the curb. And they say they're ahead of schedule, they hate to say that out loud because they think they might jinx themselves, but right now, they think they're about two weeks ahead of schedule. So, this project could be open, most likely, if the weather holds up by the middle of October, worst case, October thirty-first. So, our Telegraph median irrigation project, the work is substantially complete by the contractor. The irrigation all went in, they put all their topsoil, they did their hydroseeding. With the irrigation system working, MDOT is, and the city are, and the contractor, I mean, no one's really happy with the way it's looking out there. We thought, we've got hydroseed, we've got irrigation, what's the problem? We've got lots and lots of weeds. So, MDOT has, is working with the contractor, the contractor, you know, he wants to walk away with it being a good project, and no one's going to accept it with the weeds. So, you know, we're still working with them. We've gotta stick through that contract, you know, with MDOT, so we can make sure that that gets addressed. Outside of that contract, though, just as a side note, MDOT has been in communication with the city. They know that when Dan's excavating, who first did that original paving project for MDOT, they had replaced plant material, some of it died, of course, because we had no irrigation, and they gave up new plant material again, some of which died because we had no irrigation. So, but that Dan's contract is long done, um, you know, and some of the plant material has survived out there. MDOT's contractor did do some watering, you know, per the contract, but it's just, it wasn't enough, and when we've had drier spells over the years, it's been hard on that vegetation out there. So, MDOT's offered to pay fifty percent of new plant material that we may wanna purchase and install. So, they're still in the works, but they are at least very open to participating with Our Section Thirty-One Water Main Project is still underway. It's been kinda quiet for such a big project over there in that corner of the city. So, with this new, all the new water mains going in, it's pretty destructive to the local streets and everything. All the roads are getting pulverized and then recapped. So, where we are so far, this is just easier to show on a map in this neighborhood. In the red street, the water main is all completely installed, everyone switched over to the new water main. The first lift of asphalt has been placed, the restoration is mostly complete, so they still just have the top coat of asphalt to do in those red areas. In the gold areas, water main's about sixty-five percent complete, and after that, you'll see that first course of asphalt, which after they get that first course down, is when they typically do come in and do the restoration, so they're not driving their big trucks all over that, the final wearing course. And in the green, that is the last phase of the project, and water main installation really just has gotten started on some of those streets so far, so not too much destruction there yet. So, we're still hoping we're gonna get everything done this year. The direction has been to the contractor, if there's a street you think you're not quite gonna get to, you'd probably just rather than leave it alone entirely than to put it in some half-done state over the winter. There is water main installations that can occur during the winter months if we're not under too much snow, but, you know, the weather forecast is sounding a little scary again for this winter, so we may have them hold off. We'll know a little more in October. So, just a reminder, some upcoming projects for next year that are in the works. Our northbound Northwestern Service Drive from Eight Mile to Nine Mile, that, we've got a public meeting scheduled, that we're really targeting more for the retail and business communities that are right along that corridor. So, we've got a meeting for the Thursday at the IBM Building, the DDA is hosting that in the meeting space on the first floor there, and that's from four to six. And so, we were thinking, let's start with the businesses to make sure that we've got buy-in on an early closure, and then next month, we would do a broader public meeting for everyone in the residential neighborhoods all around there as well. Nine Mile from Beach to Telegraph, that's a project for next year as well. That one is widening to a continuous three-lane cross-section, not a total reconstruction. That one's going to be like a mill and overlay incorporated with that widening, and quite a bit of storm improvements there as well. Per that, that Crip money, that Priority Road Improvement Program that we got from the state, that's our Providence Drive from JL Hudson to Nine Mile. And Southbound Northwestern Service Drive, this is a project that we are proposing to advance construct. We have fiscal year 2017 funding for this project, and this is from Byrd Road all the way down to Ten Mile. And we're thinking if we can get this built in fifteen, we'd have to carry that money for about a year, because the fiscal year twenty-seventeen money becomes available for us to be reimbursed in October of 2016. And that's some real bad stretch road, especially up by Byrd. We're, you know, we've been doing some pavement cores, you know, preliminary design right now, and it's looking like that portion's probably gonna need a reconstruction, and then the rest of it, we can do the mill and overlay. And then our Eleven Mile from Franklin to the cul-de-sac, this one is just kind of on here as a placeholder. We don't know for certain if we're successful getting those funds, but this is over by the VAFF property. That's all I've got. Any questions?
Just a couple of other comments. I have a problem with JL Hudson to Nine Mile. We are still trying to figure out how to stretch those dollars to get us from JL Hudson up to Greenfield. We're looking at a combination of both brands of water, main replacement project, may, and I'll usually ask for a little discussion, SAD, district is being discussed. We're also, as we work our way through the deal for the former DTE site, we are in a dialogue with Oklahoma County Road Commission for Mossa Road as an economic development MDOT grant from Civic Center to Eleven Mile. And given the magnitude of the project, I love the thought process that it would be full concrete replacement. And then the other piece I want to touch on is the Northwestern Service Drive, I'm sorry, South, Northwestern Service, Southbound. Just really wanna stress, we advanced the engineering on that, but I will need council action at the right time, because we will be advancing all of the funds, and we'll be carrying that for about an eighteen-month period before we get reimbursement. And that's something we've not done with the state in the past, but we're told it can be done, so that'll be a new way of making something happen. On both of these, I just wanted to highlight, a lot of people are talking about Troy, and they took ten million dollars out of the general fund and put it into roads this year. And I mean, part of this presentation is just showing that we're putting about twenty-one million in roads this fiscal year, or calendar year, and the next calendar year, just shy of another ten million, and we're continuing to try to get more creative. What's not on this list is the spot replacement. We were going to, we were trying to get it together for today, but then this weekend storm hit, and staff just couldn't get the information in. But I know for a fact, though, if you drive Pierce from Thirteen to Twelve Mile, it's done.
Larry, yeah, I thought Larry, you wanna pipe in? Other spots?
We have on, uh, concrete mill and asphalt overlays, we've completed Berkshire from Eleven Mile to Ledgestone, the intersection of Franklin to Northwestern on both sides of Northwestern, Pierce from Bedford to Webster, Hickory Leaf, Evergreen to Westbrook, and Lincoln eastbound from Arrowhead to Southfield Road, and we did some heavy patching over on the other side, the westbound side of Lincoln. And that's just a mill and overlay with asphalt. Concrete, we're working in Section Twenty-Three, that's almost done. There's four, four different spots, Arrowhead, Lincoln to Adrian, three hundred foot of Adrian northwest of Grand Concourse, including the intersection there, two hundred and eighty feet of Fillmore Street south of Santa Barbara, the intersection of Fillmore and Parsons, that was all concrete removal and replated. We are moving over on, to Webster, into the Bedford Road intersection, up to Crescent with concrete replacement, cul-de-sac of Riverview in Section Sixteen, that's completely shot, there'll be a replacement, and then Red Lee, Twelve Mile to Roseland. We had some other ideas, but money's not gonna move that far.
If I may, we are getting those areas mapped, and again, it was our intent to do this on Saturday. The wind came through, Justin and Larry were out on crews. I have instructed Justin and Larry, what else you think you could get done this season? Put me in the awkward position of having to come back to you, so the next council meeting, I may be asking for some additional funds for, for both concrete and asphalt replacement, what we can reasonably get done this season. I also need to spend some time with Mr. Pierce on budget and the LRF note, so if you may see an ask or a request to council that maybe, and this is from the hip, you know, X amount of money for these three roads to be re-asphalmed, again, just trying to get what we can get done realistically. The other item I'm looking for consensus is on Telegraph, that median. I went by, I looped around there three times over the weekend. I was not able to connect with our landscape architect last week, and keep in mind, our Parks and Rec landscape architect is responsible for these plantings in the right of way. She was not in last week. I think the planting is too aggressive, and if we might give some thought to scaling down and, you know, making stronger impacts on the, at kind of what I would call the more visible spots, maybe it's some type of perennial grass, a daylil, you know, and a, uh, Begolia or something. What the malls do, and I think we're trying to do almost two, it almost looks like we're trying to do-
Trying to make it like-
Very aggressive, European-type planning, and our resources just may not be there. And if there's a consensus from council, I'd like to, MDOT's agreed they'll pay for fifty percent of what we're gonna replace. Lee really took up the task on that. Can we, is there an appetite to maybe have less, but, you know, and it's more focused on the ends, but leave the trees, something can quickly cut around?
I mean, I look at, Jerry, and, you know, there's still stumps in the middle, they have, you need the stumps, cut down trees and need the stumps. I think, honestly, you know, nothing has been such a negative thing in that area, that I think that we don't need a landscape architect to resolve that. I think, I think you just gotta seed, bring in some good topsoil, and cap it, cap it all, put some seed down, and just plant trees, and then at the end of each island, do some kind of a flower deal, much like they have at Long Lake and Woodward Avenue. I mean, they just have trees, and then at the end, they have this thing where our guys here can go and fix it up. What is, what is Great Lakes doing?
You know, Sue could probably, Sue could probably speak to this math, that would happen.
We actually have a meeting scheduled with Great Lakes, because there's been, um, from their perspective-
Great Lakes is responsible for-
For the maintenance, right, the weed-
I'm not sure for the one here.
Right, the pruning, the flowers, the whole bit, but, um, their perspective is that the scope of what they were supposed to do was increase. I'm not sure how that happened. It, it kinda went from highways to parks and rec this year, so there's some kind of disconnect between what was happening last year under that contract and what's happening this year. We do have them coming in, we are not paying their invoices, they've said they've been weeding every week, and, I mean, they clearly have it. So, so, all of that is being discussed currently.
I'd like, I'd like to see everything removed and do a tree planting, you know, just, just do trees down that day.
Well, this contract is virtually ready to expire anyway, so, right.
Those bushes, because they're not the way they used to be, so, what died is gone, what is left is all piecemeal, and it looks terrible. So, so, I mean, you're better off just removing that stuff out, cone it, and-
Get rid of the bed, the landscape-
Get rid of the bed, make it easier, it's like Evergreen Road, you know, and, and just give it nice flower at the ends of the, of the islands there, and let it go, because it's going on six years, believe it or not, six years, and now it went to four-hundred-thousand dollars, and it was supposed to be two-twenty.
Well, the, you know, I put that number in as the totals, because two-hundred-thousand dollars of that was the irrigation system that MDOT paid for a hundred percent. And the last time when we came back to that contract, we were really just paying fifty percent of the new topsoil and hydroseed. So, that was our, our hundred-thousand-dollar contribution, really, to a four-hundred-thousand-dollar project.
Because, no, I don't know who does the inspections, but, but when you get hydroseed, I mean, they, they have specifications, they say how much weed seed is in the, in the, and they're saying it had to be a hundred percent weed. I mean, I mean, you know, I mean, you get grass seed, it says that percentage of this, percentage of that, effescule, whatever, rye, and, but this thing is just solid weeds. And, and so, I, you know, I thought maybe in our specifications and that was supposed to go sod anyway, and it didn't, but I think that thing ought to be topsoil now, and somebody checked the topsoil, because Jerry and I were with these spades and pushing it where the curb is, it's got it, it's the same curb it hit with, it needed to begin with. I mean, that isn't topsoil, it's all, it's all stuff that they just graded into that, you know, to make a hill or a mound. You can't even put a shovel in that stuff. I mean, so, it was supposed to be, what, two and a half inches, four inches?
Four inches.
Four inches topsoil, eh? You've gotta be kidding me, boy, I'll tell you, you, and we should put this, Jerry, I tell you, it was crazy, those kids that were doing that couldn't even put the spade in it. I mean, it was clay. And, and all I'm trying to say is, I, I just, I guess, somebody's got to be really hard-nosed with inspections, and, and if it's not right, I mean, some way, we just gotta get on it immediately and say, hey, we're not gonna have that done in this town. Because, you know, I was going down Ten Mile Road when they first, first lane go east and west, and, and when they removed the, the frame, the form, you know, there was holes and big rocks below that, what is that, six or eight inches?
Of the concrete?
Concrete.
It's probably eight or nine.
Yeah, and, I mean, there's big stones and, and air, and it's right there where they removed the form. And, 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 you know, if they put the next lane in, and they do a saw cut, they're gonna go right down to that big stone, and we're gonna have that pop. I mean, I mean, I mean, I don't know who's inspecting the size of the, you know, I got out and I looked at it, and I told the guy, and he decided, got mad at me, but that's okay. But, I mean, I mean, there were their pockets and everything, and I don't know, you know, they just go with that, and leave it, we struck into the specifications of concrete, I guess, would have really been.
Yeah, I mean, all the concrete goes through testing, and, and this year on our projects, we're even, you know, we were not testing previously at the actual batch plans, because they're all certified by MDOT-certified plants, but this year, we're doing testing at the plants as well, and giving the contractors ahead of the, we're testing the concrete at the beginning and at the end of their run, to make sure that we've got correct air content. The stone, yeah, I mean, all the stone has to be certified to meet the specifications, so.
You would see, if there was the right specs, you wouldn't see the stone when they removed the form, and not see it over here. I mean, it was solid concrete here, and then you get, then we got some in the pocket, air pocket, you know, and, and all I'm trying to say is that, that even when they pull that form out, you ought to be an inspector watching, because if they pull that form out, something, they hit it with a hammer, they chip the concrete, and then they come, then when they put the next lane in, they come over there with a, with a, trial, and they trial it, flat, let it cure, and then they come and saw it, that little piece of thing's gonna pop out. I mean, it, it just does, because you got the saw blade goes down so far, and it, and it's not gonna adhere to the, to the original concrete, it's gonna pop. Now, they come down next year and they put in co-pack, you know, and that's why, every time you see that lane, that's where all the cracks are, and, and that's where it's really gotta be inspected heavy.
Yeah, and the, the joints are where your most open failures are.
I mean, they got foot here, when you pull the form, and that's the form out, so why can't do it? You know, I mean, it's crazy.
Berkshire, I have a question. That asphalt overlay, how, what's our expectation for that to last?
It's supposed to be a good road surface without very much maintenance for seven years.
Because if, if you drive over there, that middle seam, it just, if we have a bad winter, I can see it, see that deteriorating, and could you please go back on? And then the curve, it, it's, it's gonna start crumbling in, you know? And that, it just goes the last ten years, that, that curve part is gonna start deteriorating right away, especially when it starts freezing and putting saw on it. It seems like if you're gonna do that, it should be some form of steel to the side. My concern, Fred, we charged a special settlement to the businesses on Telegraph Road, are we still collecting that?
Yeah, the answer is, is yes. I don't have, I know bills went out this year, I don't know how much it is for linear foot or something. If we were to change, obviously, the landscaping, there would be a slight decrease.
I just think that we should do a real concerted effort to educate them on what's going on, because I did have some businesses saying, I'm paying the special settlement, it looks like crap. They should know, because they're actually paying additional money, and that's not what they want. So, we should do, either have a town hall, or send them letters or something, to give them an update on what's happening, and, you know, to be respectful of the money that's there.
We can get a communication to them.
The Bridge Street, Bridge Street, you know, we've been talking about that, do we have any plans for that? We talked about-
We're getting, I don't, we're getting duffers on it. They're coming in a lot higher than we thought, so we probably, and I, I know HRC's done numbers, then we took a look at what we could do for a patch, and the patch numbers are coming in a lot higher than we thought. So, we have, but we're, I'm not sure if there's an appetite for an SAD there or not.
Well, the businesses there, at least the ones that are contacting me, they're saying it's a-
I don't have any.
... It was determined, they're milling up-
Thank you, sir. Do you remember the HRC numbers, Larry?
I, I don't remember all the numbers offhand, I'm thinking it was a hundred thousand.
I think it was four. I think it was four for any kind of patch that was cold, any kind of temporary that was cold, because the roadside is in a toxic condition that exists- would hold because the roadside is in a toxic condition that's existing right now so bad.
So, that's obviously more than we would typically handle, like with a spot concrete program. So, it needs to be a bigger project and whether we move forward with an SAD or if we get our road milling passed and it's something that we can program in an upcoming year, those are kind of our two options. But, right now, it's, it's more than just, uh, you know, a couple slabs of concrete.
And so, even if we do a half and half, we do a special assessment and then we pay after something, because I'm constantly contacted about the impact, because the guy invested all this money to rehab those buildings and he's trying to market it as soon as a potential customer, a person's gonna rent, rent off their road, they say no.
I, I don't disagree, I mean, it's just what we have money for, what, what we don't. Uh, the SAD district process, it, that literally needs to be started now, in the next month to be in place for next year, because it doesn't move that quickly.
Are we patching it at all?
We're doing what we can, it's just, it doesn't hold, there's, the, the road is broken up pretty bad and then just the nature of the patch.
Even the dirt patch doesn't hold?
No, it, what it does with that much movement, it breaks out around that, then you end up with big chunks of patch in the road. The dirt patch would stay together, but it's, it'd become a road hazard where the cold patch at least breaks up into small pieces.
We've come to the point in a lot of our roads that the dirt patcher, if there's not even a good, because you're filling between holes and holes, there's nothing, I, I equate it almost like a tooth, if, if there's nothing left for a dentist to drill into, a patch, the, uh, I mean, the dirt patcher's gotta have something for it to grip into. And some of these roads are so pavo ridden that we don't have anything for it to hold.
And then the chunk comes out.
Larry Justin showed it to me repeatedly where that it just, there's nothing for it to grip into.
Okay. Last question, DTE, um, this is a kind of a very road, but, um, they promised me that they were gonna do an assessment, uh, on our grid. Our power outage is, to me, is becoming more frequent and longer. And I know that they're covered, and this will fall into your, to your pocket, uh, Mr. Moss, is that the, um, commission that covers the energy and DTE, we've gotta do something with our grid and it's already been shown that it had an impact on our economic development because we don't have enough. And now with the power outage, it's so old grid and it just, every, every storm we're out and it's becoming very tiresome. And, you know, if we have that rough winter where we have the ice storms again, not every time the wind blows, they're on now.
Yeah, we were, oh, two, two times in three months.
Yeah, same with me.
Yeah. And this time we've been out since Friday morning till, Friday morning, I don't even know why, the storm's even hit yet.
That's funny.
Friday morning, Saturday or Sunday, no.
A year ago, we had Detroit Edison in and they went through. But, there was a meeting that happened after that on Detroit, on DTE's reliability, that that presentation needs to be made to council. And it's something we should do manually because it's not just on, because they can walk you through, we've got a PowerPoint that they'll show you, Southfield map, substations, reliability factors, where they have, uh, and downtime. I think we could bring, we should bring them in, but the other part of that meeting, then you need to turn the DTE, what about your investment? And that was the last part of that meeting that we had. And that meeting came about because after the last meeting with council, they missed the mark and they should've come, they should've been speaking, they came in and talked about what they do for tree trimming and all of that, those things are important, but where their system is relative to reliability, making sure we have redundancy. I questioned some of what they were saying because, and I, I will find the PowerPoint, I know I, we have it and I'll get it out to folks. They say that the system's in better shape than what some of us in this room have experienced. But, we can invite them back within the next two to three months and go through that, but I also want to turn the final spades in, what are you doing for new investment? Because as you talk about things like the ODD, and I will tell you, uh, to, you know, folks heading to other pastures at the federal level, the state level, what are they doing? I mean, at the end of the day, Detroit Edison's a private company that's got an obligation to its shareholders and when they start investing in new infrastructure, sometimes that makes them vulnerable for acquisition and takeover, but we need policy that forces them to, uh, make. I stuck my head in downtown this morning, a intelligent conference on, uh, for infrastructure and-
Glad you did.
And phenomenal conversation about moving the city, this, this country to electric grid for cars. We can get there, but as a nation and as a state, we've gotta make the commitment to get us there. All of that ties right back to our roads, our electrical system, and then the big thing is, we can't do it if we're gonna keep burning fossil fuels or coal to get there. And you've got thirty, thirty-five years to site a nuclear facility in this country. So, imagine how deep the pockets must be for any, any, any entity that wants to do that. And, and I'll, I'll get off the bandwagon-
Throw the marketing story.
Birmingham was designed for a second tower and that could, and what we paying our rates because Detroit Edison has to scrub the air and all the fines that they pay to the EPA, that capital investment could probably in the long run save us money.
You know, then they, they can't find any place to spend rods. Nobody wants them.
Well, that's-
That's a great, that's a great part of the road.
All their investment in this area is-
Can I go back to, is there a consensus to less on Telegraph?
Let's go around the table.
What do you mean, in the media?
In the media, you can send them all the bushes and that, it'll be just trees?
Yeah. It's tastefully big, we can have, you know, our landscape, we can do that.
Well, our personal advisor died and I think it was too aggressive. We sort of-
Tell them to scale back.
Very paralyzed.
Don't replace the dead.
Well, catching the garbage, you catch, you catches the bags and the store, I mean, tell them to go up there, Woodward, the Long Lake Road and just copy it. Just copy it. It's good enough for Miami, it's good enough for-
Middle Valley, between eleven and six ninety-six.
All right, well, that's what we're gonna pursue.
All right, Mr. Fritcher.
Yeah, I have, uh, three notes here. One of the slides that you showed, uh, that the irrigation on Greenfield was-
Oh, I didn't see that, yeah, that was one of my bullet points, because that's actually a pretty big thing. Um, the, once the road commission started getting into removing the curbs and everything on the, the medians there, our irrigation lines were six inches behind the back of curb and they are telling us they shouldn't have been that close to the curb, they were supposed to be in the middle. And all the conduits, because they're not removing any stone or anything under the road base, so our conduits are all still going to be in place, but we're not gonna have an irrigation system out there in Greenfield. And they're not gonna pay for it and right now, I mean, it's something that's probably just gonna have to be a future project and I don't, there's not funds for it.
We don't pay them. We don't give them, they don't give me any money. All the county projects anyway.
It's the county project and the county, like us, we will always pay to replace, sprinkle our heads and things like that as part of our project where MDOT won't at all. They say we don't give permission for anyone to put anything in our ways away, but the road commission is usually, you know, well, they are good about it, about replacing heads and they cover it as part of their project cost, they don't say that that's a hundred percent city cost, but once they got out there, they're like, these aren't just sprinkler heads that we're running into, your entire irrigation system is right on the edge of the curb and it's in the way, like, it's just falling out as we're removing curb.
Is that much of a-
Well, go ahead, we're trying to solve this problem.
How to put it in that way? Can we go back to something, get it wrong?
Well, I mean, we're the ones that, under contract, you know, the city or DDA in the past had it installed, um, has, what I heard at the time was that we were having a lot of trouble with that irrigation contractor when it was put in, however many years ago that that was. And, in any case, and up, I mean, RCOC, they provided all the permit documents and circled in red, all the, you know, things, but we didn't do it quite right and I'm like, you know, so-
You're not accepting any responsibility for-
No, they're not accepting any responsibility right now.
We, we will work on that.
Yeah, I mean, it might be something-
I've not been attending the, the Greenfield meetings and this is the first I'm learning about this, uh, I'd like to turn the heat up on them and just see what we could do. It just, we, uh, the irrigation was properly permitted, it was in the drawing.
Well, it was permitted, I'll say that.
It was permitted.
We, we do have permits for that installation.
On the backside of Telegraph, the issue was on Telegraph when it was rebuilt, that there were no drawings in MDOT's possessions. So, as these things go through a permitting process, if the drawings aren't there, as the new drawings are being put together, someone doesn't know there's irrigation conduits and pieces, so I need, we need to go back and just do that footwork on this. Normally, we wouldn't because it's a county road, but at some point I'm learning the DDA put, pay for that?
Yeah, the DDA pays for the installation-
We're just communicating with the county folks. I have to read, do the, do the council leadership by action-
Yeah, but that was the contractor-
Turn the heat up on them.
Um, I don't think that that irrigation system has been turned on in recent year, I don't know, but, um, it's mostly, it's just been mulch out there, so I, I'm not really sure what all the history is. The water comes from Oak Park, Oak Park, their cooperation in that whole deal was that they supplied the water and, you know, we're paying for all that and then the city of Southfield was taking care of the maintenance of the landscape median and of the irrigation system. So, I mean, Oak Park isn't happy to see it go either and I'm sure there'll be some more meetings about it, but, you know, nowadays when these road agencies, when they're issuing permits for something like this, you can believe that all the legal jargon and fine print on the back is like, if it's in our way, we have to take it out, it's our right of way and we're not responsible. So, everyone has that written into their modern day permits, so unless they're just going to be cooperative with us to be good partners legally, I don't think we've got anything.
So, we don't even know that, that the conduit under the, under the road is good, we just know that they haven't disturbed it. But, since we haven't turned it on for a number of years, we only know if it still works.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's no reason why, at least the conduit in place, so typically the irrigation lines themselves are sleeved through that existing conduit, so, I mean, anything, that would be, the expensive part would be to install new conduit because you would have to directional drill it or something. So, if we've got the conduit, you know, connecting the island to the, you know, outside road into the water supply system, you know, that's a big plus that it's there, but, you know, we see on Telegraph, I mean, it's a much smaller system, but irrigation systems are not anything.
We obviously have a whole lot of footwork to do on this. We'll put it under the microscope, I'm, the line's being maintained, I've been blown out, um, I, I'll be candid, I never thought the beds looked that good. Um, we might wanna rethink something that's more water or, uh, drought tolerant and salt tolerant, we will be on that.
Okay. Um, you talked about Eleven Mile south, uh, from Eleven Mile, from, I mean, Lasser, uh, south of Eleven Mile. This has nothing to do with the surface of the road, but it does have to do with traffic flow. People driving south on Eleven Mile and wanna get on six ninety-six, make a left turn by Sunrise Donuts and to get on six ninety-six, when there's a right turn, it's a clover leaf that they don't have to cross traffic, do that, and I don't know why people don't use that, I don't know if they sign each, I mean, there's a sign there that says-
But, it doesn't say no left turn.
No. Well, yeah, yeah, because if you're going, if you're going to the, uh, the street behind the, uh, Sunrise Donuts, you have to turn left there. It's not, not Frank Frank though, it's, uh, Lost Lane.
Lost Lane down there.
It's Lost Lane, yeah. If you go to Lost Lane, you have to turn left there, but people turn left to go right down the ramp and the eastbound, but they wait for traffic going north, northbound until it gets an opening.
Then they go.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the turn directing trap.
Yeah, when they could easily just make a right, it's almost a new road because nobody uses that.
Yeah.
And I don't know if, if the-
So, that's southbound, that's southbound Lasser and people are trying to go where?
Eastbound six ninety-six. County oughta take a look at their signage or to, I don't know, flashing lights on there or something, turn here, turn here, you know?
Yeah, I'll talk to them about it because, you know, maybe there's some improvements with regulatory signage.
Yeah, and I, you know, it's prime target for a automobile accident.
Yeah, that's a busy intersection.
Yeah, it is, especially in the evening. And, uh, I think, uh, Fred spoke to it, but, uh, you and I are gonna be on the, on the hot seat next Wednesday. We were invited by, uh, Mrs. Tally to come and talk to their Proudness Towers folks on the piece of Proudness Drive from Nine Mile to Greenfield and what's going on with that, so, uh, we need to put our heads together between, we can, we've got numbers for it and-
Yeah, I saw, I just, I didn't include it on this list for twenty fifteen projects because we're not set in stone as far as having funding in place for that yet, so we need a better handle and that's something, a meeting we need to sit down.
That meeting's a good opportunity to gauge an appetite for SAD. And we could be, we could, we'll get together and include you, Councilman, uh, what the numbers may look like.
Okay, because she invited me and I said, I'm not gonna have to go by myself, somebody to hide behind, leave it all there.
I always thought that, I mean, I'm looking for a silver lining here, I always thought that rain was good for, um, of water, putting water on fresh cement was good, um, to help it cure.
Yeah, that's not a bad thing, I mean, as long as it's not such a hard downpour.
Well, I always rain and I always, I keep thinking, well, maybe that's the silver lining here.
We've had a pretty mild summer, so it's actually been pretty ideal for pouring pavement and even the, the hot, hot days that we had a couple of last week, of course, when we're starting to pour pavement, they also were real high humidity days, so it, it doesn't dry out quite so quickly, so, um, keeping the pavement sort of hydrated is, is important.
Um, one of the things that always concerns me, especially when you're putting in sewers and water lines, is you disturb the earth significantly and I know when Ten Mile, and Don, you'll remember this, Ten Mile went from a two lane road to a four with a, actually a five, um, all the edges of Ten Mile cracked because that used to be a ditch. You know, it was just, there were no curbs on Ten Mile, it was two lane and big ditch on either side and so we had all of that cracking.
And compacting anything.
Yeah. Um, so, I hope we're not gonna see that out here with the amount of, or on either end of Evergreen where we, we've put all this, you know, really disturbed quite a bit of the-
For the, for the trenches for the new utilities? Yeah, the, the trenches are probably gonna be the best, most stable soil up here on this job, we've got a lot of clay soils up here, so, anything that's backfilled in a trench is compacted to ninety-five percent plus compaction. Um, our south job, the contractors are loving it because that sandy soil is actually great soil filled on because you- Yeah, because you can compact it. Um, the clay soils are a little trickier, which is why we've got a thick stone section underneath the concrete.
I just throw that out there because I, you know, all the money we're spending, I hate to, I hope that they're addressing that because we're not gonna get the fix for today.
Right.
Um, and then I heard, I was glad to hear you say about checking the cement. Who is, who, what person is actually testing the slabs on behalf of the city of Southfield?
On this north Evergreen job, HRC has their own testing division. And on the south job that OHM is running, they usually Hampton for their, all their testing.
So, and then, um, uh, on the south Evergreen job, you know, we've talked about the sidewalks, do you know when the sidewalks will be going in?
Sidewalks will be, I believe the way it goes in, once they get that west side of the road paved and same, you know, starting on the west side for the south job as well as the north job, um, they get that road in and then they'll be doing the sidewalks and the driveways. Now, we've already been starting to reach out, um, one-on-one communication with these residents because, you know, all these new drive approaches are all gonna be concrete, which means people are not gonna have access to their- which means people are not gonna have access to their driveway for probably two weeks. Two to three weeks, you know, cause it's gotta get, first, we're gonna be paving the concrete road in front of their house, and then, once that's cured, we're coming back to do their drive approaches. So, I think, every time I get a call from someone, I take the opportunity to talk to them. But, you know, I'll have to work with, I always notify code enforcement, "Listen, people are gonna be parking on the streets, and they're gonna have to park on tight streets and walk in," so...
Yeah, particularly, um, we have a couple ticket-happy people. Tim Burkes. Got to mention me. So, anyhow, I, I've heard again from two people about, you, you know, I've assured them that Lee Schultz heard you, "And the sidewalk is not gonna be in the middle of the road." And they called me back. So, we're, we're still good where sidewalk is closer to the street.
Yeah, there were those areas that we were able to pull it further off of the right of way line. There were a couple spots on the west side of the road as well that we were able to do that.
Thank you, Lee.
Lee, what's happening at Southbound Telegraph, that that ramp is closed? That's causing a big backup to the real mess. It's been closed quite a while now. There's no construction, nothing.
Yeah, they're not always real good about notifying us when they're doing maintenance work. So, this is southbound Telegraph to take it on?
You go Six Ninety Six, Northwest, and you go on, go on Telegraph Road, you go south, it's all closed.
Okay. I'll find out what's going on, I don't know.
Been closing, I don't see anybody.
Yeah, I drove by, you're...
A press release went out last week, I'll, we'll get it circulated, and I'm just drawing a blank, the scope of work was to find it. I think it came out on Wednesday or Thursday that they were shutting it down starting this weekend.
Yeah, but you're going northwest, you're trying to get off that Telegraph Road and go south, you can't do that. So, then you have to go all the way northwestern, and then, and then you get, uh, and there's no way of getting back to Telegraph. You gotta go to Twelve Mile Road and then come back. And there you go. And you get to Twelve Mile and Telegraph, and they wait, and their line's been snowed over.
I think they'll hold on what that press release is and distribute it to everyone, make some calls if it's not clear. Yeah, I mean, a lot of times when they're doing that kinda maintenance work on a ramp, they, they can have some pretty extensive detours or something like that.
If you can hit a computer before you leave, just come back, let us know, cause it's on MDOT's website too.
The other thing is, is cutting the cement, I'd really like to know what, what the purpose of the thing is, so cement won't crack. I think I'd rather see it crack than, than, than not maintaining the integrity of the saw cut. Now, you got thump, 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 you got railroad tracks. That's what happened to Greenfield Road, that's happened to Evergreen Road. Uh, wherever their saw cut is, unless you stay on it, maintain it, and put your tire down every year, water gets in that, and, and you got railroad tracks.
Yeah, the, I mean, the joints, we seal, all of our joints in Southfield has always had a pretty aggressive joint sealing program annually. Um, the road commission, not so much.
Well, on Evergreen Road, just, you know, it's a five, six, nine, six here. So, it's all over.
Well, the, and some of the issues we've had...
We just did that, didn't we? Didn't they just get that?
Yeah, just fill the holes, yeah.
I think they probably seal the cracks when, when it's cooler out. And then when the, uh, when it heats up and the, the concrete expands, it pops it up so that it's, it bubbles, so you're, you're driving over it, boom, boom, boom.
Yeah, I mean, it's elastic, it's supposed to adhere to the walls of that concrete and move with it. So, I mean, and that lasts for however many years until it starts to get brittle, and, and that's when you redo it.
But, it sticks up, it sticks up about that high, over the surface of the, of the road.
But, what happens, they don't cut it. It's cracked. But, that saw cracks, it's better than thump, thump, thump.
Well, I mean, at least if you're saw cutting it, then you're basically telling it where you want it to crack. So, you're controlling it, and then you seal it right away.
You go two seventy-five south, you get down two seventy-five south, you have to stop and see if you got a flat tire on it. Yeah. And that's from those saw cuts, and I don't know, why do you do that? Anyways, let's move on.
I have a couple questions. Can you just double check the timing of the light on Evergreen with the construction? It was a green light, the traffic is not flowing.
Let's see where the traffic kinda closed.
Absolutely right.
Yeah, the road commission was actually supposed to be out today to adjust. That closure happened a little ahead of when the road commission could come out and adjust the timing. So, right now, there's, or at least as of this morning, there was still that dead phase of turning. That should be, I'm assuming that they got out today, they were supposed to. We've also asked for some additional time for the Evergreen traffic, because we are having backups major in the afternoon.
You will wait at a green light to go to a red light?
It's really...
The Thompson Farmhouse, that light is on green now, or red, way too long. Nobody keeps coming out of that driveway. Or, if it could be adjusted for five o'clock, when more people might be. But, like, right in the middle of the afternoon, you sit there and wait.
Well, and then there's some other improvements. I've asked them to look into a lot of the left turn movements right now at these intersections are on a solid red before it goes to a green arrow. And I'm like, "Can you turn us to a blinking red?" So, at least when they're, you know, in the middle of the day, when there's not a lot of traffic, you can make your left turn. So, they're supposed to be taking care of all that.
And then I have one other comment, and I brought it up at our council meeting last week, and I really think it's a result of them digging at Ten and Evergreen. There's a large hole, and it's still not repaired, and I know it's a county road, but it's pretty dangerous. It's right at, it's in the eastbound right lane at Northwestern Highway and Ten Mile before you get to the light. And it's, it has to be at least five or six inches deep and wide. And cars constantly, you know, swerve around that to avoid hitting that.
Is that actually in Ten Mile?
It's on Ten Mile, yeah.
So, I'm going east or west?
Going east, and it's in the right lane.
I'll get that reported.
Okay. And then lastly, Ken, is this pointing to our media outlet, the, that point? And this, this is very, very good, you know, to let people know what we're doing, how much money we're committing.
And I, I think that's the heart, heart of the message. In roads, it's over twenty million, and with, it's twenty-one million in, in roads, um, this calendar year and next, uh, calendar year. And then, uh, water is twenty-four million. So, we have forty-five million in, in public works projects slated for Southfield.
Yeah, it, it needs to get out. Thank you.